Good. It is 5:45 and tonight we'll be having an informational session regarding the health plan recommendations. And tonight we'll have Joe Harden from Mercer. Hi, Joe.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Good to see you all. Sorry that conditions are such that I can't see you in person. Always one of my most favorite nights of the year. It's getting better with y'all. And visiting about the Health Insurance Committee and the good work that they've done. And our recommendations. Sorry that is not able to happen.
We're having a little bit of trouble hearing you.
Any better?
That is better, thank you.
Sorry. Your wired microphone up there. So I'll try to just shout if you're not hearing me well. So ready to, are we ready to put you ahead?
Yes.
Yep.
Great. All right, so tonight, as we do every year at this time of year, we talk about our Health Insurance Committee and what they've done for the upcoming, in the past year. Get myself moving here now. There we go. So tonight we'll spend just a couple of seconds on committee background. I think many of you understand what the committee's done and over the years and how they're structured. Talk a bit about market trends and then going to plan experience. So that you're at the 2022 health plan recommendations, what that looks like. Spoiler alert, really good news. Had an excellent year in the health plan in 2021 and allowing us to do some, some good things for both the city and for its employees. So no bad news coming here. All right, so.
Joe, we're still having trouble hearing you. It sounded muffled. Brad, Brad or IT guy says you just gotta get louder.
All right, how about this? Well, I'll get real loud. Okay. So your, remember your Health Insurance Committee has representatives from all of the city bargaining units, plus the city staff and department heads, been operating for 25 years. And frankly, this is, it's relatively the stability of your insurance committee and the attention to detail that your folks spend. Really, in my career, just a remarkable, a remarkable job. This year we met in both May and September. May to look over the results of last year and September to talk about the results of this year. So you should feel proud of what your employees do for you and the effort that they put in. Excellent job this year.
Hey, Joe, this is Brad again. I, Brenner, I, your microphone, I don't think you're using the one that's on your chin. You're using the one that's on your laptop. I'm not sure if you can switch that.
Yeah, I just pulled my, I just pulled my earphones. Is that better?
It's just slightly muffled. You might have to call in, might be the best option. Or use that microphone on, that you were by your chin. We gotta change that microphone from your laptop to the headset.
Yeah. Why don't I try to call in guys? This is, that's gonna take me all, all kinds of time. So hang on, I'll try to dial in.
Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
Charlie Brown's teacher. That's them listening to you.
Yeah.
You're speaking very clearly.
Left side for saving several thousand dollars.
Yeah.
How's that? Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right. Let's get back to what we were doing. Here we are. Can you see my screen now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we need to go back at all? Everybody good with the committee?
I think we're good.
All right. So the Mercer team has been busily at work this year as well. And a few folks that you haven't met, some of you on, on council have not met, the team kind of behind the scenes. So Kyle Tritz is our actuary, our financial consultant that does all the numbers for you, has done that for the city for several years. Judy Greider is our project manager par excellence, working with the committee and has done so for a number of years. And then Maria Anderson is our transitioning lead consultant. And there's Judy now. Hi, Judy. And then Maria Anderson is our transitioning lead consultant for purposes that, and reasons that we'll talk about later on. So anyway, it's not just me, not just Joe, never has been. Have a great team behind the scenes that's been working for you. So let's talk a bit about market trends. I mean, this has been a very difficult couple of years to project healthcare costs very, I mean, clearly, right? With COVID, with the increase in costs because of COVID and then the reduction in demand because of COVID, it's been a challenging, to say the least. Where we think we're landing though, is that in, in 2021, we think we're gonna be somewhere in the 4% kind of overall national healthcare increase. And the next few months are gonna matter to that number, honestly. In terms of how fast we kind of come out of Delta variant, how much more vaccination gets done, et cetera. That will lead to elective surgeries and things coming back more quickly. And so we may see a cost increase that we might not have otherwise seen. But in any event, we do believe that as we go into 2022, there's a bit of pent up demand, right? Plus there's additional treatment that, that the variants have kind of led us to understand. There may be more cases of COVID. There certainly will be more vaccinations. So 2022 is a, is a bit of a tricky year to project. And you'll see what we've done for your numbers going into the next year. But, but certainly, certainly it's been challenging. And, and it's not a year to be aggressive necessarily from a pricing perspective. Any questions or comments before I get going?
I think we're good.
Hey, Joe. Another one from Brad here. Sorry about this. Your speakers are probably on, on your laptop causing the echo. Just turn them down a little bit, that way you can hear our questions.
Yep. Hold on here.
Or just put your phone on speakerphone and then your laptop can, your speakers lap, speakers on the laptop can turn off.
There we go. I think, I think we're good now. Better? All right, so because of, because of what's gone on really the last couple of years, we really are dealing with, I would say, four major trends in the benefit space, particularly in the medical side of things. Certainly, the economics of healthcare have been really pointed out and highlighted to everyone, not just, not just folks like me who deal with this all the time, but, but all of us, right? We understand now what things cost. And that leads into also, you know, we understand that good healthcare is important. Whereas, you know, the average employee might not have understood that in, in the old days. Now, after the last year and a half, people understand that that's a big, big deal. We also understand better that folks don't necessarily all have the same access, understanding, use of healthcare that everyone else does. And that's a, that's an issue that we have to wrestle with and certainly been an issue that's been pointed out as we go through COVID. And then finally, you know, the, the challenge that COVID has presented in terms of economics around staffing and, and making sure that your plan in the marketplace of all employers out there, that your plan is a good one. If, because if you don't have that, that's a, that's a difficult, difficult thing in today's hiring and recruiting world. So those are the trends that we've been tracking. Those are the things that we've been watching and, and dealing with. So if we transition from that into kind of your plan, how's the city been, been working? If you remember, we've got three plans, right? So we've got, we've got the green plan, the red plan, and the purple plan. So all color coded, three different network versus non-network plans, all administered by Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota. And all of which have the ability to, you know, basically have a higher deductible and, and for folks to save dollars, you know, in a, in a health savings account if they wish. Your enrollment has been traditionally, since we rolled out the purple plan, very much driven toward that purple plan. So you see the June 21 figures kind of on the bottom of this slide. You know, 90 plus percent of your employees are in the purple plan. And that's been kind of, like I say, the way it's been ever since we rolled that plan out. Your costs in 2021 are above there. The city pays the same amount for any plan that, that people select. One, one amount for single, another amount for family. And so employees are really making that sort of marginal cost decision in terms of what makes sense for them. And in 2021, we, based on committee recommendation and, and your approval, we started setting dollars aside specifically into a reserve fund. We had good experience in 2020. And as we went into 2021, we decided to, you know, set aside some of those dollars explicitly for a rainy day in, in the reserve fund. And so that's gone, been going on kind of all the way through this year. Your enrollment, as I said, you know, most, most of the folks are in the purple plan. You know, the age of your employees, your generations, really you're divided equally in thirds between boomers, Gen X and millennials. You don't have any Gen Z yet on the plan. That will, that will certainly change in the coming years. But, but right now you're, you're very much of a, a third, a third, a third from a generational perspective. Lot of numbers here and a lot of small print, but basically what this is telling us is, you know, experience, the claims experience of your plan for 2021 has been really positive. So the numbers, the biggest numbers there with the, with the green speedometer show you that our gross plan cost has been about $600,000, you know, halfway through the year against a budget of about a million one. So a good surplus, about a 59% loss ratio, you know, which is, which is, you know, very good from our, our perspective, below what we're hoping for from a budget perspective. And if you look at year by year, you can see where we think things are going to come out. So again, lots of numbers on this page. But effectively, what we're trying to do here is track our claims on the top line, the actual medical claims that folks are incurring. And then add in administration and stop loss premiums for, for large cases. And then compare those expenses about two thirds of the way down the page to the total premium or our total budget that we've set aside. So I'd point you to two things here on this, on this page. First of all, our 2021 year to date, we're showing about a $400,000 surplus. But that's halfway through the year, right? So, you know, things can change and, and they, they often do. And we know that claims tend to pick up toward the end of the year as people utilize the plan more and they get through their deductibles and so forth. So we, we expect higher expenses in the back half of the year than in the front half of the year. But even with that, we believe that we're gonna have a, a, a good sized surplus, about a $700,000 surplus if, if everything breaks the, the way we think it will from an experience perspective. And then compare that to 2020, where we had about a $900,000 experience surplus. And we've had several good years, even 2019 generated a bit of a surplus. And that's wonderful. And that's, that's the, the, the good side of being self-funded, which, which the city is and which the city has been for, for 25 years. Good years like this, you are able to, you know, generate and retain a surplus that you might otherwise pay in premiums if you are fully insured. Now, years come and you've been, you know, some of you that have been on council for a while know that there are years when our experience is not quite as good and, and we, we run a bit of a deficit. But in those years, you know, your, your deficit has certainly been offset these last couple by these large surpluses. And, and surpluses are, you know, we like to say in the insurance business that, you know, if you have a bad year, the insurance company will get you, you know, the next year. If you have a good year, the insurance company will probably not get you back. I mean, they'll probably not give you a lot of money back. So to the extent that you can be self-insured, it's, it's usually a, a, a good idea. Why so good is the general next question. You know, why has our claims experience been so positive the past couple of years? Well, you can point to one major factor, which is listed on this page here, which is we've really had very low large claim activity. For the, you know, five years before 2020, you can see that we generally average between eight and 10 large claims, claims over $50,000 in a year, every year. And, you know, that's why we buy stop loss insurance. So we're protected against those claims and that's fine. But still, you know, even with stop loss insurance, you know, the city has to pay, you know, the first hundred thousand, the first hundred and 10,000 of, of 115,000 of, of those claims. And so if you have eight or 10 of those claims, then guess what? You're paying $100,000 times eight or 10. In the last two years, 2020 full year and 2021 so far, we've only had one claim over $50,000. And so that's a hugely positive result, you know, for your claims experience. I would tell you that, you know, you're not going to run year after year after year with one claim, only one claim over $50,000. That's not, that's not sort of, you know, actuarially sound. It's, we're, we're going to regress to the mean at some point. And our mean is kind of what you see in the prior five years. But these years, 2020, 2021, we've done, you know, very well because of it and our, our claims experience shows it. Questions before I move on?
None here.
All right. Couple other notes before we kind of get into the pricing for, for next year. Where are your people going for medical care? Really three locations primarily over the past several years. Gunderson, Mayo and Winona Health are by far and away your top providers, both on the professional side and then also on the facility side. The ratios change from year to year, obviously, as the mix of, of claims change. But, but the reality is it's, you know, those are your, those are your three main providers. And, and those are providers that we, you know, want to be sure that we continue to have in our plans, at least in one of our plan options. You know, going forward. Interestingly enough, the, the, the plan that's got the highest enrollment, which is the purple plan, does not have the Mayo Clinic as one of its, as one of its providers. So folks that are in the purple plan have committed themselves to going either to Gunderson or Winona Health or potentially to, you know, providers in the Twin Cities and to not go to Mayo. And that's, that has not impacted enrollment really in any major way because most folks are in that plan. So a couple of, a couple of thoughts from a financial perspective. You know, we've had excellent experience in 2020, it's continued into 2021. We know that the, the lack of high cost claimants is a big piece of that. Your enrollment has been incredibly stable, just exceptionally so over the past several years. Ever since we went to the green, red, purple sort of layout, folks have gone to the purple plan and they've stayed there. And as I remarked earlier, you know, this, the last two years really show, you know, why it's, it's a generally good idea to, to, to be self-funded. So let's take a, let's take a look into 2021 and 2022 and what that means in terms of projections. So when our actuaries, you know, look at this and look at your rates and think about kind of what you, you're gonna do for next year, we, we want to take COVID into account. And we looked at it and sort of built some scenarios based on interaction with the public. You know, things of that kind, maybe age, different, different impacts, location within the country. And so what we believe is, you know, as we go into 2022, your healthcare costs, all employers that are kind of in this baseline medium scenario are gonna be about a percent, you know, between a half a percent and a percent higher than they would otherwise have been but for COVID. And that goes back to, you know, some of the factors I talked about earlier, some of the snapback of elective procedures and, and things of that kind. So when we did our pricing and rating, we, we built in a bit of a buffer, we, you know, reflecting the fact that we think there's gonna be a bit of a, a spring back on, on, on code related claims. So we'll see. I mean, we know, we can't be perfect, but we, we think that that's going to definitely, you know, be out there and be a factor in some way, shape or form. When we build our pricing, we also need to think about fixed costs. And so there's two large components of fixed costs, the administrative fees that we pay Blue Cross, you know, to, you know, to pay the claims and answer the phones and, you know, keep the networks up and running. And then the stop loss premiums. What, what we're doing there is we're buying insurance to cover ourselves if claims, any single claims go over $115,000 per person. And you look at that and you say, holy, holy cow, Joe, that's a huge number. It's a big percentage of the, you know, of the overall cost. You know, why are we paying so much? Well, if you remember back to that large claim slide, maybe this year Blue Cross, you know, will make some money on our stop loss. But up till now, the past five or six years, they have not. The city has definitely come out better than Blue Cross on the stop loss side of things. And we kind of do that because we, we want to be sure that we're, that we're safe and that we're covered. We have a recommendation coming up that you'll see that, that will maybe make a bit of a change to that. But, but we do believe that, you know, the stop loss premium is reasonable, it's appropriate, and it's, it's the right number at this point in time. So then when we look at, we've got the COVID piece, we've got the fixed cost piece. And then we think about, okay, well, what are claims going to be? Well, we blend, when we look at, we look at our claims, we blend the last two years of claims experience. Your group is relatively small, right? About 100 people. And so claims tend to be volatile as you, as you saw. And so we don't want to use just one year of claims experience and, and get ourselves either too high or too low. So we blend the two bits of claims together and then project them forward into the future by using a trend factor to, to project what we think claims will be next year if they were the same as they are this year. Price increases, things of that kind. And so what it then, what ends up happening is this chart here. So we start with our projected 2022 claims of about a million three. We add in our administrative expense of about $600,000 to get us to a projected cost of a million nine. And then we compare that to where, what we, our rates already are, like what's our budget already today? And our budget today multiplied by the people that, you know, are, are in your plan, so adjusted for any enrollment shifts, it's about 2.17 million, right? So there's a surplus there, right? No, no question there's a surplus. And some might say, and if you were much, much, much bigger than, than you are, we would probably recommend that you, you know, reduce rates. But with, with the situation that we're dealing with here, coming off the second good year out of two, knowing that we tend, will tend to regress to the mean at some point, with COVID hanging out there, our recommendation from a Mercer actuarial perspective is to leave rates the same, leave them unchanged. So no increase to the employee, to the employer budget rates. And then of course, you can do as you wish from that perspective in terms of, you know, increases to employers or to the employees, pardon me. But we would suggest that that's probably legitimate as well. To try to keep, keep the momentum going, we are also recommending some new programs. So right now, Blue Cross offers your, all your employees a program called Share Care. Share Care is a, is a personalized health platform that gives folks advice on nutrition and exercise, wellness, things of that kind. That's part and parcel of our administrative fees right now. There's two new programs that Blue Cross wants to offer to the city. One's called OMADA, which is the Diabetes Prevention Program. Another one is called Learn to Live, which is online behavioral health. Those two programs we've used and worked with in other circumstances, they're effective. They're, they're helpful to employees. They give them the advice that they need to, to, you know, deal with either behavioral health situations or, you know, if they're, if they're breaking into, into diabetes. And the cost is relatively low, $1,300 per year total. And when we talked with the committee about that, the committee unanimously recommended that we, that we go forward with these programs if, you know, that, if, if council would adopt them. Because this is the way to try to keep ahead of claim issues that might be occurring in the future. Getting at these, addressing these sorts of, sorts of situations. So with, with all that said, our recommendation then is the city, the city rates remain the same. The reserve contribution remains the same. And then, you know, that would sort of can lead to the conclusion that employee rates could, could also stay the same. And we believe we're in, we're in a very good place and a place that not all employers are certainly. Particularly if you look back over the past two years, you know, to, to have two straight, now going into our third year of no increases, you know, from an employee perspective and an employer perspective. That's, it's not, it's not completely unheard of, but it's, it's rare. And it's a, it's a testament to the things that you've done. We've gotten a little lucky. We're on the good side of the experience, but we were positioned well to, to be able to take advantage of that. And then one more thing that we did want to bring forward to you is, is a recommendation around stop loss. So remember, we talked about stop loss that, that pays for, you know, that, that covers you if employees have large claims. Well, we, at Mercer, we have a, you know, a wide range of actuarial talent and we, we can look at sort of the, the probabilities of large claims for different sizes of groups. And so this table here is not specific to the city by any means. But it, it shows us that, you know, we've got, if, if we had a group of 500 employees, we should expect six to 10 claims at $100,000. So if you're 100 employees, you can kind of, you know, do the math and say, okay, you know, we should be somewhere, you know, somewhere in the couple, one, two, three range of, of these sorts of large claims. And so because of that, we asked Blue Cross to give us, you know, some other alternatives for stop loss pricing. And one of them was, is, is shown here, right? So we, you're currently at $115,000 stop loss policy. We asked Blue Cross to give us 125 and $135,000 options. So in other words, the city would take a little more risk. In, you know, $10,000 more risk in the case of $125,000 stop loss policy. But we would save $103,000 in premium, meaning our break even is 11 claims. So if you think about it, you know, we would have to have 11 claims over $125,000 before we would lose, you know, would, we would lose the, lose the bet, so to speak. And your worst year, 10 claims over $50,000. You've never had anything more than 10 claims over $50,000 in all the years that we've, that we've worked together. So we're really comfortable recommending that that's a way to, to save some dollars. Now, you may have some, you know, you'll, highly likely that you'll have more than one claim like you're having right now. Maybe you have three or four or five or six, or maybe you even have eight or 10 at the $50,000 mark. But you'll still save a lot of money in premium. And it, it seemed to be the right time to do that, particularly, you know, coming off the good years that we've had and as we build up our, our reserves. So let me stop there. Questions? Comments?
George?
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, very, very good informative report tonight. Very much appreciated.
How's that? Thank you. Joe, thank you for the report tonight. Very, very good information and very fiscal, fiscally good information. But just a question, what is the definition of a family? Is it a husband and wife together, a husband and wife and two children, a single parent and one or two children? What defines a family?
Yeah, great question. Great question, George. It's, it's all of the above at the city's, in the city's plan. The city has a, what we call a two tiered plan, single. And then family is anybody but a single, right? It's a single plus, plus somebody else. It could be a spouse, could be a child, could be a spouse and a child, could be a whole bunch of children. So you have a two tiered plan. Other employers have moved in, in a direction of, you know, maybe additional tiers, maybe a single, single plus one dependent, et cetera. But the, and, and we've looked at that at the committee level in the past. And, and the stopping point always is, you know, it's a zero sum game in terms of dollars. In other words, if we added more tiers in the middle from a pricing perspective, then the full family tier, spouse, you know, employee spouse and children, that number has to go up. Because we're, if we're taking less for the ones with, with less dependents, if that makes sense, then we gotta take more for the ones with more dependents. So the, the, every time we talk about that, the committee says, ah, yeah, don't want to do that. No, thank you.
Because I know back when I was working, they were looking at perhaps a couple insurance that would have been cheaper than a family. And I don't know if there's any merit to that, but just hearing that in, in past insurance discussions.
Yeah, I mean, again, we could, that's easily done. You know, you could create a, a couple rate, but then your full family rate would have to increase.
Okay.
Some number of those full families were our couples, right? So they'd go down to the couple number, but we know that we need, you know, X amount of dollars. So we're gonna have to increase the full families to get to the same net dollar number.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Cam, go ahead.
Sure. Hi, Joe.
Hi, Pam.
I have two, two questions. One is about the reserve fund. Would you remind me now where that comes into play? If the city needs that reserve money, how does it work?
Right. So so the city has that basically set aside and allocated on, you know, in the health insurance fund where all the claims get paid out of and in the stop loss premiums get paid out of, et cetera. And so in theory, we could come to a year where where the actuarial recommendation would be that we need, say, a 10% increase. Let's say it's a 10% increase, a $2 million plan, so that's a $200,000 increase. And you might say, council might elect to say, you know what, we're going to use $100,000 of that reserve that we've got and make it a 5% increase, not a 10. So that's, you you would elect to to apply it. So we we essentially go in and and intentionally underprice the plan, knowing that we have reserve dollars to make up the difference, if that makes sense.
Yes, excellent. Thank you. And I also, I have a question about COVID, long term COVID, as it's called. I've been reading recently about people who've been caught unawares that their insurance policy didn't cover some of the long term effects of COVID. Do you know where the Blue Cross Blue Shield suite of policies stands on that?
Yeah, there, I have seen those articles too. And usually, as I've looked into into those at a sort of surface level, those are individual, you know, policies that you might get kind of, you know, on the internet or what have you. Our our plan here, the city's plan, is going to cover all medically necessary treatments, you know, going forward, right? So for not only COVID, but any illnesses of that kind. So you would not have, you're not going to have any concern being the plan sponsor with your plan today, the way it is.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Joe? I think we're good, Joe.
Well, one last thing, folks. I I mentioned earlier that I was introducing Maria for a for a reason. And that reason is that while I'm not retiring, I'm I'm handing over the reins to your your highly qualified Mercer team that's actually in the Twin Cities. You know, Judy and Kyle and Maria are much closer to the Minnesota market. And, you know, it, I knew this day would come someday. This is, this is one of those, in consulting, you often don't get to say goodbye to your clients the way you want to say goodbye to your clients. But, you know, I've been working with with you, your predecessors, the city as a whole, for 25 years. You have literally watched my kids grow up, right? So, you know, my kids that were very small when I started working with the city, and now they're off and doing their thing. And I reprinted some of the minutes of back and I don't even know what year 25 years ago was. But when we, when we put this into, when we put this into place, and 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 here we are now. So thank you all for ever, for being a part of my life, my family's life. And and I'll miss you all, but I'll be close by and I'll come swooping in anytime you need me. Or maybe even if you don't, just to come see how it's going. So thank you all. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe. We appreciate the service and obviously you've done a great job for us over the years. So we want to all thank you very much. George, go ahead.
Yeah, Joe, I've been with you for 24 years and from looking at your hairstyle in mine, they've never changed over those years.
It's classic. It's 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 a classic hairstyle, George. Never goes out of style.
I think what we're seeing, George, is what working with you for 24 years has done to poor Joe. But actually, Joe, you're one of my favorite visitors. The information you give and the the insight you give into our healthcare plan is phenomenal. And I've really enjoyed working with you these last 11 years. So I will miss you.
Thank you. Thank you all. I'll miss you. I will miss you too. More than you know. Coming to Winona has been a big part of my life for a long time and and not not making that fall trip is going to be, is going to be tough. So remember me next year when you do this.
Agreed. Will do. Thanks again, Joe. Appreciate it.
Thanks, all. Talk to you.
Have a good night.